I have a meeting order at 6:56. Public comment? No public comment. It's our consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and I think someone may want to make a motion with an amendment to remove something for discussion.
Could we remove the superintendent's expectations from that agenda?
Yes, but I need a motion to do that.
We just need to move to approve the consent agenda without it in there, right?
Yes. Including the additions.
Would you like to move to approve the consent agenda without the superintendent's expectations?
And adding the...
Oh, and adding the...
Hiring and reservations.
Hiring and reservations. He didn't say that.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, Tina, you wanted to talk about the superintendent's part of this?
I did. In this monitoring report, on the beginning of it, it says interpretation treatment of the communication with parents, guardians, and citizens. Under that, it says communication is equitable and respectful from both the superintendent and the district staff. And I noticed when I read this, there's a wonderful list of things that as a district we do all together. And so I'm wondering what evidence Libby might have of things she does as a superintendent. I mean, as a personally, so people communicating to you one-on-one. Communicating.
So Tina asked me this earlier, so I have made a bullet point. So I have, I respond to emails from parents within 24 hours and phone calls as well if I'm in the office. Unfortunately, a lot of time I get phone calls and leave messages and I'm not in the office. However, with the addition of Anna, that has helped considerably because most of my phone calls now go to her rather than coming to my office, which was a change this year we made so she can tell people if I'm out of the office or not. My emails are public record, so anybody is more than welcome to pull them up to make sure that they're respectful in my tone. And then with parent phone calls, whenever I talk to a parent, I have a parent log that I keep in a confidential location. So they're my notes from every phone call I get from a parent. And while that's covered by Pruppa, certainly I could make a log of that if you're interested in that. But I take notes so I know if a parent is repeating a phone call that I have a log. I know that, right? It's all drafted out together and to make sure that I can keep track of things and synthesize that if I need to. And then if you look on my Twitter feed, it's open to the public and it's pretty positive. If you don't follow me yet, do so. Now Bridget and Jim do.
Yeah, talking about pumpkins today.
I follow you too and I'm still waiting for that follow back, just saying.
I do follow you. That's right. I do follow you on Twitter.
She's too busy working to follow you.
So all of that is open to the public and I am consistent in my positivity of what sharing with the great things that the district is doing. I've gotten some parents writing to me through Twitter now, which is a new thing this year. It didn't happen last year. And through our MRPS websites, or Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter accounts, thanks to Anna. She's taken charge of that. So is that good? Are you looking for other things here?
No. Because it was sort of missing.
This is true.
But I have one more question.
Sure.
Under your evidence for interpretation of employment compensation and treatment of the staff, you have the superintendent has put in place an evaluation system for administrators that will drive compensation off. Could you explain that?
So using when like we're up for those, the administrators will be negotiating, I'm sure, their salaries this year. With myself and Jim, I would assume, being that it's the first year that's happened. Because last year they had a contract, they were under two-year contracts, so there was no negotiation. It was listed in the contract. So I'll be using the evaluation system that I have in place for them to drive that conversation. That's what that means. Drive a conversation around if they're coming in...
Individually?
Yes, individually. If they're coming in asking for a big raise, then we can look to see what the evaluation results and what kind of things we've been talking about for their own continuous improvement and what evidence they've gathered around that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was all my questions.
And by the way, I'd like to correct the record. You do vote on Twitter, so.
Did you check?
Not that we've moved on or anything.
If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's expectation monitoring report.
Second. Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Board business, the, I think this is the Andrews Show. MSMS Building Board Committee. And Andrew, you can...
I'll go.
Yeah, and I don't know if you want to just hang out back there or...
I'll let it move it.
It's a very fancy chair right here.
Yeah. Just so cameras, so you can be part of the whole field.
So first of all, a quick anecdote. About a month ago, I finished a mountain bike ride at my wife's school in Stowe and ran into the middle school principal.
Did you tweet about it?
And he was talking about, what?
He didn't.
He was talking about, he was talking about the state of their building and I mentioned that we have this middle school building committee that we're just getting off the ground. And he said, oh, we did something very similar to that. And I said, oh yeah, can you tell me about the process? Who was involved? And he's like, we had this great guy from Black River Design named Andrew LaRosa who really helped leave the process.
I want to go back to the compensation.
And I, no, I'm serious. He seriously said this and I was like, well, we're fortunate because Andrew's with our district now, so just wanted to put that out there. So we met, Libby, Andrew and I, and we had preliminary meetings to talk about the general trajectory of this building committee. And we toured the school. A brief update on that, I think, just so that you all are aware, we have, Tina's the other board member who this board appointed. And Andrew's going to be the vice chair of this. We have Jack McCullough from City Council who's on it. Pam Arnold's the principal member. Then we have Dan Richardson and Jay Erickson, parent members. Thank you for stepping up on that. We have Eli Rosenberg, who is the MSMS teacher representative. And then we have Sylvie, is it Dewey's or how do I pronounce Sylvie's last name? Does anybody know? Okay, but we will find out at our first meeting, but she's very excited to join the committee. So that's the committee. In terms of the trajectory, we had talked in our charge, we had talked about wrapping this up by the end of this fiscal year. And after talking with Andrew, since he's been involved in these processes before, and after three of us looked at what the schedule would look like, we think we're going to need until probably November 2020, so a full year. Our first meeting's going to be at the end of October. October 28th is the first meeting of this committee. And so one thing that we're going to be asking for is a revision of the charge because the board approved the charge that we would have this work done by the end of the fiscal year. So that's one thing that we wanted to bring to you. Do you want to talk about the process at all, Andrew, in terms of what we're looking at right now?
The, when we sat down and looked at the schedule and just when you start taking into consideration, you know, the summer is pretty well lost and the holidays, November is pretty dicey to get people to, you know, to get work done. So by the time we take time to get ourselves organized, to understand the program of what, where we want to head, how to overlay that on existing conditions, how to explore other options, and then you throw into there a couple of public forums, the time just brought us to November. And it wasn't, and that's actually a pretty aggressive schedule because we're not, I don't think that we're really looking to come to you to say, this is the solution and this is how much it's going to cost. It's sort of, these are the options and these are the magnitudes and these are the relative pieces such that the conversation can have a good, you know, solid footings for further conversations. And we've got a tentative schedule that I think probably after our first meeting, one of the things we'll do is probably review that with the group and then we can get that back to you and see, you can actually see the sort of progression of where we're looking ahead.
Yeah, we're going to include two to three public engagement and input sessions throughout the course of this. We'll probably present on the work that's been done, but we really do want to get a lot of community input on this. We have heard from a number of community members in the immediate proximity. Most of those community members are particularly concerned about the new busing situation. And I just think it's noteworthy that the two parent members that we do have on this committee, they might not be on the same street as all of the community members that we've heard from. Not that I'm certain of the exact, that all of those community members are on the same street, but these two community members, these two parent members do live in the immediate proximity of the middle school. So in terms of representation for that immediate proximity, I think, I think that community is represented. So the, other than extending the deadline, which we're going to ask, you know, we can extend it to November 2020. I think we'll be done by November 2020. We might want to just say by the end of 2020 in case something...
Yeah, I'd build in some little room.
Yeah. So I was going to propose that as one change. The other thing that we really feel like we needed to talk with the board about, and I've already talked with Jim about this to an extent, is the charge, the first charge of the committee is to evaluate options and opportunities for an MSMS building and property arrangement that meets the educational goals of Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools. And it says, this evaluation will include consideration of the advantages and disadvantages of the current MSMS building, structure and property, changes and improvements at that location, and relocation opportunities. The key, the thing that we were getting hung up on is if we're going to evaluate options and opportunities that meet the educational goals of Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools, we need, we wanted to come to the board for guidance on those educational goals. Because we don't have those educational goals, you know, there are goals throughout our policies and we have a vision statement, but we don't have educational goals clearly laid out. And so we were thinking that, we had a little bit of a discussion. I know Andrew and I are at least thinking that defining those educational goals is quite outside of the scope of this Main Street Middle School Building Committee. And so we wanted to come to the board to talk with you about. I'm not certain that those exact goals will be ironed out if we were to do some larger visioning with the community. I'm not certain that those will be ironed out in the next couple of months for us to rely on them. So we want to have a discussion with you about what to rely on. To criticize.
This brings up the question that we really haven't reestablished ends or clear goals.
Or do we have a three- or a five-year plan?
No, we do not have a three- or a five-year plan.
No, we're not three- and five-year.
Just like the Chinese Communist Party?
Yes.
You'd never hear said it in Montpelier Roxbury.
We have a few of those this year.
Is it possible that the language there maybe does not advisedly chosen? That it's suggesting that this building committee needs to maybe take on more than it really needs to take on? I mean, it could, could the charge really just, the point of the charge really just be, the administration, we may not have, the district may not have something called goals, but I mean, the administration has continuous improvement plan and has, you know, has lots of, lots of things in place for how it's conducting. And the point is, does the building meet the needs that the district has?
Yeah, I was, I wonder if you could change goals to educational needs. I mean, I do think there is a conversation we need to have about whether you want to set some district goals or ends.
What this is going to...
But I'm not sure that, you're right, this committee is not the place to do it. Nor do I think, does the committee needs to get tripped up on that.
So there's probably, there's probably two questions that happened here. One is, and we might want to table this for another meeting, is about the larger, you know, establishing ends, establishing goals, establishing three-to-five-year plans, which, you know, I personally think makes a lot of sense for our district. But then there's this other issue, which you're touching upon right here, which is what do we do as a building committee? And if you are saying, you know, leave it to the administration, leave it to the committee, you know, that will...
Right. And not necessarily the administration because the source of what the educational needs and objectives are currently, right?
So long as you're comfortable as a board saying, administration, you define what our educational goals are for this, and then the committee will base our work off of that. I just...
Particularly for middle school children. That's what we're talking about.
And for, and we're fortunate in that we're not trying to put too fine a point on this. You know, we want to do good work that's very useful. And we, it sounds like what we're talking about is we take our best between Libby and the administration and that we say, this is what we envision the program to be. We clearly explain what that is. And then if that needs to be tweaked, that, no, we need, we want a more vibrant arts program, we want a more vibrant STEM program, we want to do whatever, that can be laid on top of it, you know, because we're going to be doing relative comparisons. And so if the parameters we're using call for an addition of X amount of square feet, if we change those parameters, that just means we change the square footage in any option that we look at. So I don't think it's a stumbling block so much as, as just what do we use? And if we use Pam and Libby's input and, you know, we kind of say, this is what we're going to use and that's good enough, but at least we can use that as a starting point and tweak it from there.
An example from the past is, are you going to have classrooms working together in preference to separate? Do you want walls that move or do you want classes together? You know, we went through the phase of, we wanted walls in between and that would be helpful.
And then, and again...
Do we want maker space or, you know, those, as opposed to a family consumer science?
Right.
You know, are there, is the administration going to be looking at five years and things like that? To think where we got caught up when Andrew and you were... Andrew and I were talking about it, is that yes, we have like the current needs plans for the next three years out, right? That are very academically focused in what we need to do. However, those aren't the same as ends, right? If you're in policy governance, so, so what we, and this probably isn't the right time. So it's all dependent on, if you get another person sitting in my seat, then who has a different vision for Montpelier Roxbury Schools, that person's going to take them there, right? Without ends, you know, so your ends are going to drive what the community believes should be the larger outcomes. And anybody who's sitting in my seat needs to provide evidence to you all that we're working to reach those.
Would you say we do have a three-year plan?
We have our continuous improvement plans that are, yeah, that are on that trajectory. I use the example of like superintendents across the state are, well, different folk, right? So I can look at one of my colleagues who's really into personalization and global learning through technology. And so he puts a lot of emphasis on technology in their schools and that piece connecting to the global world and very little on an MTSS system, whereas I put a lot of emphasis on an MTSS system and very little on devices. It's not my priority to, you know, to get the highest, best technology devices into my kids' hands.
But we're counting on you. You're ours now, so we assume you're going to...
I know, but if I win the Powerball tomorrow...
Well, I, since I wasn't here during the charge, I want to be careful, but the two things, is 20 years is referenced in this?
No.
I thought I saw something about, you know, where are we going for the next 20 anyway? But the thing that obviously parents are going to first raise is, what about the merger? Would, you know, that's the one I hear on the street all the time is, what happens to this building when we merge with Washington Central? And, you know, and I mean, that's not a, that's not a idle conversation.
No, I'm laughing because I hear it too.
Yeah, and so that, so that kind of throws the old monkey wrench in everything. And I think it's built into this, but, you know, you're looking at almost like a binary situation there. And I, I don't know, do you plan for two eventualities? Do you plan, what's the, how do you do that?
I think that has to be part of this charge, part of this overall conversation. I was thinking I have to step back and say, that's been on the table since the 70s and it hasn't happened.
Yes, but now we have movement.
Do we? I think, I think there are some people who'd say the movement has been backwards.
Okay. So ignore it.
I don't think ignore it, but I, I don't, I think...
I don't think we're going to ignore it.
I don't think consider it in this conversation, but I also think that using that as a stopgap to not invest in...
No, right, of course.
Yeah, exactly. I think it has to be part of the conversation. You know, if there are indications that, you know, that a merger may be possible, like real indications, not, boys, this is a great idea, you know, there's a couple of people in middle sense who like it, like, you know. Yeah, I think that's, that's part of it. I think there's broader considerations too in place of community members. Yeah, I mean, for instance, as a community, we're, you know, depending on the lawsuit goes, but we're investing $10 million in bringing people downtown with a garage and a hotel center. Right now, we have an open high school. There are high school students, you know, who go to lunch daily there. There's, you know, 100 employees who use the town. We have events that bring people to the town at a high school. Yeah, if, if we want to spend $10 million to bring people in with a parking garage, do we want to take all that activity and shove it out to U-32 and bring in a middle school crowd if we have a very different use of the town?
I'm just sensitive to the first public hearing.
Yeah. It's going to come up.
It's going to derail the whole process.
Well, no, it's not. I think we have to think about it so it doesn't derail the whole process.
Yeah, and this is something that, you know, I've talked, we talked about this when this first came up. And when, when this was first mentioned, the comments on Facebook that I heard from parents were, many of them were focused on this issue. The issue of whether to merge or not, obviously, is outside of just Montpelier because there's a lot of other communities involved. And it's, the scope of that merger study would be much more involved than the future of Main Street Middle School. So I think in the process of this, we have to look at, you know, would we even have the space to take all of our middle school students and all of U-32 students and put them into an existing building? Or would we need to build roughly a new building? And what would the cost of that be, kind of thing? But we're not going to be able to answer all of the questions with regard to a merger as part of the Main Street Middle School Building Committee. You know what I mean?
I do, but not $1 on this school until we've resolved that problem is one of the things that will be thrown out.
I think we have to say, you know, this problem has not been resolved since the 70s. And I mean, do you resolve it by saying, it's resolved in one of, it's one of three ways. Either it becomes this hypothetical that stops progress from happening. You say yes, which there's not a lot of indications, given what happened with the merger at U-32, that yes is a near-term thing. There's a lot of scarring in those communities and they need some time to heal and figure things out. Or you say no, never, which, who could really ever say no, never? So, or you say, yeah, it's a theoretical possibility, not now, but in the meantime, we have to make investments and given how so this process has been, we'll probably get most of that investment paid back before things are resolved. Bridget.
So two points. One is, the question of merging districts is a totally different question of buildings and merging buildings and merging schools. So they're not actually the same issue. And even you could merge the districts without shutting down any school or closing any buildings.
Yeah.
So we have to keep that in mind. And I really believe, Andrew, that this process is an opportunity not to answer a merger question, which is way beyond the scope, but to provide data and information, concrete facts on the ground that would inform the conversation. What, what, what is our, what are our issues going to be with that building? Like, what's the long term? If you look at it, moment and needs, does the building work? Does it not work? It's an important data point. What is the overall population and what we, if we did merge and want to close buildings, what would that cost? What would that look like? So hopefully it can advance the conversation in a data-driven way and we just see where it goes.
So not, so gather the data of various scenarios and let that help the community understand whether or not a merger is actually, or a merger of buildings is actually something we want.
There's a very simple scenario that people always say. Close this middle school, put all the middle school kids in the high school and put all the high school kids in U-32. But it's actually, that's actually a very complicated building question.
Yes.
And it's, it's not like something you could do for free. You'd have to deal with kinds of construction.
And it would come subsequent to a merger anyway.
Right.
And I think, sorry, but I think we can push that all aside and ask the question of, well, you know, how is this building serving our needs now? And what is it costing us? And, you know, what are the improvements that could be made to serve our needs if it's falling short in certain ways? Yeah, and then, you know, if the politics of the merger comes on top of it, which they will in some way, you know, we'll have to deal with that the whole time. But I think getting that information down so we can make some total choices based on data, as Bridget was saying, is pretty important.
But a real challenge for you guys to stir that.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
That's right.
I think we have to acknowledge it. I don't think we can ignore it. I don't think it's fair to the community to ignore it. And yet I don't think that we, this is not the committee to answer all of the questions as to whether or not we should merge because there are a lot of questions and there are a lot of considerations outside of just this building as to whether or not a merger is viable or whether it's preferable.
People are going to want to hear what Bridget said we just said. You have to be able to navigate that and say, this is not precluding, this is not, this is not biasing that process, this is not, we're not taking a position on that.
Yeah.
We're gathering data and realistically, we have a few years before anything like that would occur and we're not going to sit still and do nothing for a few years.
And that's what the charge is. The charge of this committee is not to make a recommendation. It's to inform the process.
Yeah, and the shape of that building at a sort of merger time, you know, it's, you know, say we make some investments in that building and it's a, you know, and some improvements, that could change how a merger looks in five years in terms of how we use them. Tina?
I would say in the merger discussion we had with Roxbury, Roxbury was ready to tell us how the building worked and what condition the building was in and all of those things. We could say what condition the building is in, but we haven't answered the questions educationally. And if you were in a merger process, somebody would want you to do that. So I'd say that's what we're working on, the fact.
So this question that you raised originally about goals, is that kind of an iterative process where the administration provides the initial, and then it comes back at some point saying, okay, here, we've collected all this data, we could really use clarification on... That's exactly why the process is going to take in here. Because just, just if we meet once a month, which is probably pretty reasonable, the first meeting, we'll sit down, so our first meeting in late October is going to be, let's tour the building, let's all get on the same page, I'm just here, we're going. December, we sit down and say, okay, what do we want this school to look like? How do we want it to function? What do we want to teach in here and how? We wait a month to regurgitate that information back out to say, is this what we all understand? Yep, nope, yep, let's tweak it again. You know, so you, it is, it takes a while. And, but that's exactly, that's exactly what we're going to be doing. And then we'll have sprinkled in there those public forums where we get an opportunity to share them and we can coordinate.
So with regard to the question of the goals, and Libby's point is very well taken for me, so I, all of us are representatives for the community. And Libby's making a very selfless point here where she has a lot of, her and her team have a lot of discretion over this process. And I actually think she's pushing us in the right direction, which is, you know, Libby's not always going to be here. And we have an opportunity outside of this, but we do have an opportunity to begin setting the goals, the ends for our community. And I do think that's an important process that we shouldn't totally forget about. But I do think it's outside of the scope...
We need the board.
Yes, we need the board. But I do think it's outside of the scope of the Main Street Middle School Building Committee. And so for this, it sounds like people are leaning in the direction of having Libby and Pam, Andrew, our administration, kind of set the tone in terms of our educational goals for this process.
Educational needs.
Yeah, I would change it.
So we can amend, we're going to be amending this anyways.
Yeah, I would change it to educational needs, but I do think we need, not tonight, a discussion about setting some ends or goals for the board.
We have another hour.
Libby, how do you feel about that? Because obviously this, this does put more of the onus on you with regard to the educational needs.
I think it's great, yeah. I think it's fine.
And you're going to hear it at the first public meeting again, is sort of what the community thinks the needs are. It's just going to...
Which we're going to incorporate that.
It's going to keep on feeding back all these opinions, yeah, and you're going to pick and choose what you think is consistent with the other kind of issues.
Well, we're going to organize the information.
And that's why it'd be nice if there was a starting point, the school had... And that's why it'd be nice if there was a starting point. The school had either a list or some ideas about educational needs. So when you're starting with a community, you learn, starting with just, what are your ideas to the school?
We will.
Talk about how to facilitate a process. We also talked about getting an actual professional facility or a good process.
And, and from those needs, we're going to do some visioning as a committee before we meet with the public.
It's an exciting conversation with the community. I think it's, it's gonna, it lets people tangibly think about how they see education being done in a, in a physical space.
So I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to replace educational goals with educational needs. And I'm going to move, can I, I can do both things in the same motion, right? I'm going to move to produce a public-facing report by the end of 2020.
That's a good.
All of it better?
No.
All right.
I think one of the things that we really want to do, that I, I think would be valuable, is we make this a living document, but it's not just something that just, that we can easily go in and say, oh, okay, well, we want to bring these programs in. How do we easily incorporate that and see how it ripples through?
Yeah, I think we just, yeah, Andrew gives regular, semi-regular updates for how the process is going, that we need to amend the charge and, you know, rein it in or broaden it out or refocus it.
So another general question. Andrew, do you know of any other districts who have gone through this process? And maybe any of the committee members you guys could fall back on or rely on for?
I would say every, every school. Everybody does this. And the first thing you do is you build your program. And it's, you sit down, program by program, and you talk about, okay, science, science classrooms. What, what are we gonna teach? Are we gonna, you know, high school, you just look at the high school science lab.
True.
From 20 years ago to today, to what it's gonna be 20 years from now. And they look totally different because the way people teach is different. How, how many kids do we want in a classroom? What are we, what are we lacking for in storage? You know, that's stuff you need to help support those classrooms. You just write it down and you, you talk about where they want to be, and you run the numbers. And once you get that and we're all agreed, or at least fundamentally, of, of what it might look like on paper. And then you just start overlaying it on the building and see where those chunks start going outside your footprint. And then you start playing with, well, how can we, how can we get them to fit on our site? And the easy part is, you know, if we need X amount of square feet here, if you build a new building, where could we possibly do that? And how much space do we need? And then you start looking at the relative costs. And that's gonna be the toughest thing, because the last, that's the last thing we want to talk about. And ideally, you don't even talk about costs. It's inevitable you're going to. But to be able to say, to renovate is going to be X. To build new is going to be X plus. To do something in between is going to be there. And then you can start talking about, well, what is the value? How much, how much is it worth to us to achieve these goals? And can we afford them?
Yeah, and I think costs, that's obviously part of the charge. And obviously, affordability is a really important element of this for the community. At the same time, when we're in the process of visioning and we're in the process of exploring all of these options, I don't think that's the time to be constrained by costs. I think we put everything out there, and then we look at the costs. So the costs are gonna come later in the process.
So what Andrew said about value is really important. And I think you're gonna face that initially from the community is.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, my building's good enough, right?
And so that issue of, of, is it worth all the cost to get that, you know, completely up-to-date building that we all would love to have? Or, as Libby said, you know, are we, and I don't mean to skew what you're saying, but like, the decision about, do we just buy a bunch of things? You know, like, a building is a thing that we use to get our work done. And go sit under an apple tree instead, right? I mean, there's, this is a, it's a value laden, the costs are coming up fast, you know? I mean, it's gonna be, maybe that's where it comes back to the board, right?
Yeah, and, and we'll have to put some, we'll put a qualifier on it. But this is our assumption as, is that this is a quality building that's going to last 100 years, that's going to be made of quality materials. Because it is. You can build a building for $150 a square foot, or you can build it for $400 a square foot. And one, there's pros and cons of each of those. So we'll, we'll definitely put those out there and have to make those, those decisions. And what it costs, who knows?
And, and it'll be a snapshot in time to emphasize what Andrew's saying. Because 10 years from now, some of the tariffs that are in existence on materials that are being imported into this country might not exist. Labor costs might be different elsewhere in the world. Might be different here.
You gotta seem like you totally got it. I'm serious, like all of you. So it's great.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be fun. And it'll be, it'll be interesting and informative and nothing else. We're gonna be able to come up with some, hopefully, some, every time you have these conversations, and you guys, you guys deal with this every day, you answer the same 10 questions every week. And to be able to have a document that says, yes, we looked into that, and this is why we think this could work, couldn't work, or here, here are the hurdles, and it's just down, it's done. It's not, it's not gonna be a matter of, well, we looked into that a couple of years ago, we'll, we'll look at it again, and we'll get back to you, committee. This is the work we did, and this is, this is what we believe is the scenario. So.
Good. Ready to move on to?
Any questions about this building? I know we kind of buzzed around.
I've done a great job.
Feel free to, feel free to email me if any questions. Libby sent out a poll to do a tour of the, the other buildings. I've also have, I'm working and will have ready a draft of a building summary. And basically, it's a narrative of all that we've done, or a narrative of the buildings and what we just did. And again, we haven't, I have not gotten into costs or, or recommending projects or any of that. I think you guys need to get your head around what the whole district is and what, what everything's there. Because you need to, you know, there's a lot of stuff to be done in picking and choosing what's the right project. And I, at some point, hopefully, I'll, I'll know you guys in your direction well enough to be able to say, yeah, that's, I know that's where they want to head. But I think you guys need to see it all firsthand first to, to help with that.
Good.
Thanks. You have the key to lock up?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna.
Perfect. So, for discussion, really engagement in the budget process. Are you gonna show us a video?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No, no, I'm not. I was going to. There's a link right there for everybody to see. Check it out. I'm sorry, we were gonna do that, and I told you.
It's okay.
That's from the V S B A. It's on their website. And it's, it was done actually by students in Vermont a couple of years ago. Some of you may have seen it before. But I think it's always good to watch right before budgeting season starts, because it tries to put a very complex system into simplified language, which I've, I've watched it about 25 times and maybe 30% clear about what the whole process is. But, but anyway, that link is there for everybody.
Hasn't changed much in the last couple of years?
No, not.
Not enough.
No.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, and this is the kind of annual part where we decide who we want to reach out to and who wants to go meet with whom.
Ryan had some ideas for Roxbury, right?
Yeah.
What were you talking about, though?
You could have a couple.
Or you just look like you have a couple ideas.
They're really good ideas.
You could email about it. I didn't mean to put any words in your mouth there. It's valid, I mean.
I think we went out to the parent groups of the two schools in the senior center and we had Kelly Hubbard called it, moved it out to.
Joanna just asked me the other day, it was in her notes, to ask me in October, and she wondered, did we want to schedule something in November? I actually have a suggestion from senior center. If you're talking about, communicate before you start the budget. I just found it difficult last year to just go into one of people and say, so, what did you think about the budget?
It's easier if you're proposing something.
They can respond to it. So I did think, well, okay, so that you did have a chance beforehand, I could schedule one or two times at the senior center that I'm sitting there and anybody could come and sit with me and just say, I'm here for half an hour if you wanted to come in and say anything that you had to say about it. That way, you're not asking, setting up a room and expecting 5 million people to come, and they don't come. Whereas, what we should do, which we've done before, is schedule the senior center for a presentation when the budget's done. And often, the city has helped with this. I don't know, I mean, has presented their budget. And so the senior center's asking you, when, if you'd like to use their facility, when would you like to?
Yeah. No, I, I agree. I think there's some value, especially in place of this point with the budget. Well, I guess, timing also gets pretty tight, though, because that's a, yeah, and we do do the public forums. And then you don't, and the budget's kind of already cooked. Or at least partially cooked.
Well, that, in that scenario, you're not asking for opinions, you're explaining what the budget is. I mean, if you've done it already, you're just, it's a presentation of the budget so people understand what they're voting on. You're no longer gonna ask for opinions, because you're not gonna change anything. But that, so that's why I was suggesting sort of, okay, I could be there Tuesday at 1 o'clock for a half an hour or another day if you have anything you want to say. Prior to the budget, do stop by and see.
I could do that, Libby, too. If we did that presentation that in the past couple of years we've done at the high schools, kind of a problem. If we did that at the senior center, might we draw a, you know, diverse crowd?
Well, some seniors would come that wouldn't come to the high school. But then again, would the people that went to the high school come to the senior center? I don't know.
Still, we'll get a couple people to receive some informational presentations anyway.
Yeah, we only get.
Could get a hand. Bridget, are you talking about right before town meeting day? That informational session? Or the more. The earlier one. The one before we wrote the budget out. I think it had two people last year.
Well, we also had the after-school thing right before, where there were like 100 people.
And then they all left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why I was suggesting, don't do it until your, your budget is done. The bigger one, the budget's done, and you're just explaining to people. And we may get only two, but.
But it kind of begs the question of, how do people, how do people gather and talk about things today? And I think that there is, there are some groups that are consistent, but they're not necessarily, and even altogether, they don't form a large percentage of the population. And do we need to be thinking about this from more of like, can I support the word, but like a media strategy or a, or a communication strategy that is not in a physical location, primarily?
Digital.
It is. And it's, and it, there you leave other people out, right? So it's not exclusive. But if we don't include that as a piece of it, and then the method you use for that is often different, too. It's not, let's all sit down and have a presentation. It's asking a provocative question or making a provocative statement that then solicits a reaction, and then you gather those reactions. And so there's a whole different way we communicate today that we have to incorporate as well as go to the senior center.
Right. Well, for example, Bridget was saying, go to PTA meetings. And we've heard from the middle school PTA meeting that the only person there is she and two other people. So now, maybe they show up if there was an agenda item that they were interested in showing up to, but.
Put busing on the agenda. Then put budget in.
Really small letters.
Well, if you had three, well, go ahead.
Well, so we have, I mean, we have much more of a media presence now. We could use those media platforms to encourage people to provide input about the budget process.
You could, if you ask people to adjust priorities or.
The concern, of course, is that people will, you know, we then gather a lot of priorities.
I'm concerned that people don't understand that the, that the budget doesn't drive the priorities.
Say that again.
I'm concerned that people don't understand that the budget comes from our three- and five-year plan.
Oh.
It doesn't come, it doesn't drive the three- and five-year plan. I think people may not understand that, that the public doesn't drive the budget. We are meeting the needs of our students and the community and creating a budget to meet those needs.
That's why, if we had a three-year plan that wasn't the one submitted to the state, but was clearer and shorter, that people could understand, then they could refer to that. And we could.
But you said something very important, that the public doesn't drive the budget. And I think that that's a scary thing, right?
The public doesn't know.
I mean, it, it does in the long run of influencing us and influencing their, you know, the families influence the district, but, and, and everyone else does. But in the immediate, it's not like, so what are the provocative slides we throw out there and say, react to this? What are the things we're actually wanting?
The public, I would, I just want to say, the public certainly drives components of the budget. For example, the reason why we incorporated busing into the budget last year was because of public engagement and because we knew that there were needs and that we were able to help certain elements of our community better. With regard to food service and providing for those folks, that was the result of a lot of community engagement.
There's a lag. It takes time.
It takes time, but I don't, I don't want to say that.
And the influence is on the policy that we're going to provide better food for our students. Then we create a budget to provide better food to our students. It's a separate process.
Yeah, no, I take, I take Beck's point that, that the way this is structured, that we, we go out to get input on the budget makes it seem as if the budget's not policy or something. When in fact, what we should be asking for input on is policy. Policy.
Exactly.
And then we're totally, we're gonna go back to that. It's that drives the budget.
So we're engaging the community the wrong time of year.
It's an information item to the public.
Which is something we've concluded before.
Right.
We've concluded before that we should engage the community in the spring.
We're on a different topic.
In a way that would drive the conversation around ends.
Does it really work that way, though? I mean, because we've had kind of a pretty broad, like, take, we've had, like, a transportation policy that's probably a supportive lesson, but it really takes a percent of it.
So it wasn't a budget issue?
But it wasn't, it didn't, it wasn't something that came up, like, right during the budget.
It was a committee.
Like, I presented the budget.
Oh, let's throw that in.
It was, you know, it was, it was a longer-term conversation that we were responding to, and then it was implemented in the budget.
And I never remember any of those meetings for the budget last year that somebody actually talked about busing. They came to the board meeting.
Ahead of the budget.
Ahead of the budget, yeah.
And to the extent that it reacts, it reacts with a lag, because it needs to react with a lag. So it reacts, but it takes a whole year before it makes it.
So we have to change the policy.
Yeah, we have to change.
And then the budget reacts to the policy.
I think there are places that, Steve, you're making me think of the provocative question I get. There are, there are very limited places in the budget, first of all, that we have a lot of play with, right? The vast majority is salary and benefits to our employees. And so, thinking about the small areas where we do have a lot of play, and you all do need to make a decision around, like, I'll give you an example that's on my mind for this year's budget, is the enrichment piece with the after-school that we've talked about. Do we pay for it all? Do we not pay for it? Do we have people pay for some? Do we not have people pay? You know, like, the policy discussion around the funders, it's the same piece. So I just wonder, like, those would be provocative questions. Should the district pay for all after-school enrichment activities offered through the district? Right? You know, so, so then, like, you could get some feedback on that. I could get some feedback on that.
Can we react fast enough to that?
It depends if we can get it, like, if we can get the social media reach. If it's a good enough question that people have opinions on.
No, but can you react in the budget to it?
Oh, at this point in time? Like, right now, we could.
Right, but in a month or two? Is it doable? I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, those are the things that are, that are massageable in the budget, because they're not the biggest.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not huge pieces. They're not huge components in our budget. They're the ones that people say to me, well, it's just a drop in the dark. We're talking about an $18 million budget. When really, you know, like, if I got that, you know, if I started adding up all those drops in the budget, it adds up. But there are certain areas in the budget that, that really do influence community and opportunities for kids. And, and we've had questions, we've had discussions about them here, about what to do that aren't salary and benefits.
Maybe we should list those questions.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Maybe we should list those questions and try the same venues we've tried before, but like, go to the PTA meeting saying, we're talking about budget, and we're interested in your answers to these questions.
These are the things that might be effective this year in this budget.
Yeah, or on social media, or, you know.
Put on like the, yeah.
District, the Facebook page.
You use the same kind of questions over and over.
There you go.
If you bring those two or three questions out repeatedly, everyone starts to learn the question.
And then you can start to, to narrow in the question. So let's, let's stick with the enrichment opportunity, right? Like, if we get an overwhelming response of, like, yes, the district should put that money in the budget. And then you can come back with, okay, so let's weigh the pros and cons to this. Also, you know, like, so the pro would be that it's, it's free and equitable, and everybody could. Also, you know, like, so, the pro would be that it's, it's free and equitable, and everybody could, you know, and we could, we can provide that, and we can provide awesome opportunities. A con would be that it limits the amount of opportunities that we can provide because we only have so much money, right? So, so knowing those two pros and cons, now what, what is your, you know, now give us some feedback on that. It, it just, it could gear a conversation better.
There, it is a very practical thing. There is a political reaction, which is, you're asking me to weigh in on the things. And what I really want to talk about is the fact that our schools are poor, or, you know, whatever that thing, that bias that's already out there all the time is, and we cannot react to that on a moment's notice. We may be able to react to that over two or three years if we wanted to, but it is, you know, the question of, like, we have too many teachers, or whatever that they are. They're overpaid, you know? They get, their healthcare is too good. Whatever those things are, you know, the things that we really can't do a lot about, but that are coming up, we do want to hear those. We don't want to disrespect that opinion in the community while we recognize that we can't react to it very quickly.
Yeah, but it's also, sorry, it's also a chance to educate in terms of, that's a negotiated piece. That's a different item, or that's a different conversation.
So, we need a forum, all I'm saying is we need a forum for people to be able to voice that, that macro-budget thing while we understand that we're actually working on a micro-budget.
And I was gonna say, we, the real big question is, how do you get some input? And I think what we've just discussed is the only time we get a huge amount of input is when somebody's upset. And then they all come from big numbers, and that's fine, but unless we're gonna elicit a question that's gonna make everybody upset, and they're gonna turn out, then probably large numbers of people are upset.
This is not to elicit a question that makes people upset.
I was gonna say, you could probably come up with three questions that upset people, and that would get everyone to pay attention. I mean, we do want people to react to a question about the budget right now. We, we want them to. We're doing a budget. Pay attention.
What about doing a Facebook survey, or using social media, doing a, some kind of virtual event? Survey Monkey, I mean, any of those channels, would you, to get, to just to get, to gather data? And say, okay, eighty-seven percent of you said, this is what you want, and then go from there.
I think I'd wanna, I'd wanna target it with three, with specific buckets.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I would rely on you all to, to help craft what those buckets might be. I was gonna say, I want to be careful, because I think a lot of us have, have Libby, and this is supposed to be... Well, but this is supposed to be the board. I know we're not a policy governance board per se, in the governance model, this is the least, it's really supposed to be the board as the, you know, your representatives.
Right, we've been talking about raising this, you know, reactionary question. Like, really, I think a lot of our job in this conversation is paying attention to the grumblings, paying attention to the praises throughout the year, last month, next month, and being able to synthesize that roughly into what the budget would be next year.
It's also important for people to understand that last year, our budget went up less than the rate of inflation, and that with regard to like the grumblings that you brought up, which are some of the more popular ones that I hear in terms of grumblings, and so, when people understand, like, well, how are we comparing to prices at large in, in society in recent years, this, this, this district's been, been pretty good on the last year.
Well, that's a slide with, that's a slide with three facts, right? Like, how we're doing budget-wise, how we're doing on, on demographics, and how we're doing relative to, you know, other schools, you know, whatever we want to say about those things, but that slide about where we, how we did, how is it going lately? That slide.
And actually, maybe that's a better question. How is it going? How, how do you feel about the schools, and what are they doing, you know, how's it working for your community? Because if it's working well...
It's not provocative.
I like the specific, I, I'd actually really love to get input on this after-school question.
I might just want to pop to my head, because I know we've talked about it before.
It's a really hard question. It's a really hard question.
And then that, oh, the other piece of this...
Well, we could vault that tier, too. Oh, yeah, no, but it, you know, in terms of like, big priorities and then a couple of specific questions.
The other piece of this is when you solicit information and you expect to use it, what's your gathering technique? And what's your record, record technique? And I think that's a, if this is simply an extension of our day-to-day role as a board member, which it sort of is, which is, we are listeners and we are representatives, then it can be done informally. It does not have to be written down somewhere, but, you know, ultimately, it comes back to us as representatives to cast votes.
Are you representatives or are you trustees?
Well, in that case, we have no reason to listen. We're not representatives.
Well, we're elected by the community, so...
It's a representative democracy.
So, even though this is our responsibility...
Right, exactly, exactly.
Even though this is our responsibility, Libby just mentioned to, maybe the next board meeting, is that too late to, for her to come back with her to how she proceed, and we could add anything to it so we all have the same set of questions, however we decide whether it's online or somewhere else to ask. Does that make sense? Having given some thought to it. Or did you expect us to come up with this right now?
I don't think we have to come up with it right now. I do know that it's October 2nd, or someone tells me, and...
It's my mom's birthday.
In case she's watching. She watches all of the board meetings on file. Yeah, I, we, we could probably figure out so specifically what is the next section, but after that, we're into November, and if we actually want to get some answers to questions like this, then November gets pretty late.
Well, we might decide now how we get it and where we get it. We could work on that. So, at the next board meeting, I could say, okay, I'll talk to Libby, and we're gonna go to the senior center this day and this day, and the next PTA meeting, or this is the way to do it online, and we set that up. So, it would be, that would be all set up, ready to go. We just haven't decided what the question is.
I, I think we should have it online in the office, because, you know... Yeah, I mean, the only two places that I've ever been on a media like this, or there's been significant numbers, especially since the parents groups seem to be not terribly people this year, unfortunately. But there's been a couple bombs meetings that were well-attended, and the senior center has been decently attended at some times.
I skipped it last year, but the Rotary can actually have a good number of people.
Really?
Like, yeah, it can have like twenty people or so, and they're all, but, you know, the people who are watching the taxes.
And this is always willing to help us.
So, I'm happy to be that guy this year.
You need backup.
I mean, I'm having to go speak to some of the parents.
I mean, the union one is usually...
Who's that?
A large group. The union parents usually? I've done that a couple of times when they were online. Only four. Because I've been there a couple of times with them, like, the union group, but that's...
I think the thing, part of the PTA, PTO issue is, is there an agenda? In other words, even when I was a parent, I'd look at it and say, hmm, what are we doing this time? Oh, it's a speaker that's coming to...
Well, it's against the provocative question, then. It's like, give me, give me something I'm gonna talk about.
Right, and then I'll...
I could have a house meeting, you know, thirty people, if I had a provocative question.
Offering pizza.
Right, offering, or food.
We always offer pizza.
So, maybe we should go back to Ryan, though, and say, so, what about Roxbury?
Well, I think maybe before we even go on Roxbury specifically, like, thinking about this conversation, the thing that jumps out at me is we're trying to get information from specific groups. In the end, what are we gonna do with that information? Are we all gonna tabulate our numbers? Rotary said five yes, ten no, seniors said twenty this, fifteen no, and then we're gonna sit down and say, these are the numbers are, this is the direction we should go? Because if we are gonna go that route, we need to do a much better job at getting a representative survey of the community and what we're trying to accomplish, but I don't think that's...
Are we taking the temperature of people we don't normally take the temperature of? Is that the goal here? Take the temperature of people we don't normally hear.
And also, by having conversations, and it informs our thinking, right?
That's true.
And we, we hear from people we don't necessarily normally talk to. We hear things we don't necessarily normally hear. I don't think we're trying to get like a survey data, because that would be, that's a different thing entirely.
Absolutely.
We're just trying to expand the senior center, expand our reach out.
It's just us actively trying to have...
And it's part of our messaging out about, you know, where we're headed as a district. That's kind of a secondary piece, but it builds a long-term kind of understanding about what the schools are doing.
So, it's as much about the process as it is anything else?
The process is important.
That's what we're saying.
Sometimes it's important that you have the meeting, and you have the pizza, even if only five people. Because you had the meeting, and people could come if they wanted to, and provide it down.
Yeah, and so, we have discussions, you know, just to have...
I see it as a strictly political process. I mean, we will, we will get information we didn't get, but we really have a, to, to keep the school support healthy, which we have a very supportive community, we reach out to people who, who want to be asked, you know, who need to be part of that, and I think Rotary is a great example of that, right? That's not a big enough group to make a bullet, but they are people who really care about their community, and they talk to other people, and so, go out and show respect to a group of people who have, for a very, very long time, have been paying their taxes and their community, and just show respect, and it's political, it's a political thing. It's, that's a good political, is what it is, not a conniving. And the same with seniors. Exactly the same.
So, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to do some current outreach, sounds like Tina has senior center, you, the Rotary, and then we should, I think, think about some...
Other questions?
Yeah. Maybe like four or five, like, too general, too specific.
Keep it narrow.
On things that really resonate.
We can talk about that, I think, next board meeting, and get it out really quickly. And I'm, I'm working with my leadership team tomorrow morning on, kind of, big picture, high-in-the-sky ideas. So, we might be able to pull some themes from that as well from our end.
But that's in the context of maybe budget implications?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It is in the context of budget.
I mean, rather than longer-term?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
And then we might do something electronically and see how it goes, so people could respond to those questions.
Once we get that definition, it shouldn't be too hard to repeat it through multiple channels.
I do think, though, that, so, I think that there's value to the process, there's value to community engagement, which is really the political angle about that was amazing. With regard to these, these questions, with regard to the community's priorities, it really shouldn't be a reactive thing, and it really should be incorporated into, into our goals. That's my, I know I've said it in this, tonight, so...
Our goals?
Yeah, I think we have to have a, a community process, and then we can say, you know, we went through this process, we engaged the community in this way, this is, these are the goals of the community, and this is reflected in our budget here, here, and here. Right now, we can't really do that, and even doing this, this is good, but it is very reactionary. It's not really giving the community a chance, though.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, this is a process we go through every year, and it's, it can't be a substitute for other, more inclusive ways to, to lock terms and results. It's a temperature take, people, to the budget.
But to respond to Andrew a minute, I think that this administration has some clearly articulated goals. So, I mean, in terms of those questions, we can, when we're asked about the budget, we can... Right, we have a direction, and when we're talking about the budget, we can...
You're going somewhere.
Say, this, you know, this is how we're working on equity, and this is how it's being implemented, and there are very specific things that we're doing, and there are budget proposals that tie to that. So, although it's true that we haven't undertaken this kind of large community process that we need to facilitate, and that it's not as though we're direction, that's a really big, I mean, I know, it's a really big process. And I think we felt, you know, with the merger and the new administration, that we just...
Oh, totally.
Couldn't take it off, right? Couldn't put them through it before they even...
Do you think we're coming to that time, though?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and when would that happen?
I mean, and I think it's a big question for Libby and her team, too, if they feel like they're, they have, they could make the time for it. Do we feel like we can make the time for it, and what do we feel like it would add to what's going on?
Could it be that these questions, these pointed questions, sort of, are little, almost trial balloons where you incorporate some of those things you're working on into practical, real-world questions? And I think like the, like this, like the enrichment is sort of a way to do that, honestly, or, I mean, the practical things we've worked on, they're going through this lens, these lenses that you've created for how you analyze this, or how you do decision-making, and honestly, that's what the board gets put before the board on, is your priorities in practical, concrete, immediate questions, so, I don't know.
I, I feel like with some of the after-school stuff, for example, I'm not certain that this would have all been fleshed out, so I don't want to propose this as a panacea, but some of those priorities that we gathered from the community throughout that process, you know, Libby might have not been quite as blindsided as a new administrator had we done a visioning process in advance. Now, I understand a new district, all this, wasn't gonna be feasible. There was a lot of change. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not saying anything with, I, you know, circumstances were such that that's the way things played out, and things are going really well now. But to Libby's point before about Libby's not always going to be here, I think, I think we can engage the community, and we can show some leadership in a way that can set our administration up for success for a longer range across administrators, so, that's my thought. I'm very for it. I think we need to make time for it. That's my perspective.
And you've heard me say this before, but I think...
Do we need a five-year plan?
Well, if you had a three-year plan, that you would, you'd have what you want next. So, maybe it's not in this budget, but it's coming to the next one. Look, it's written here. So, we discussed it. We decided this is what was coming next. So, somebody dies and leaves us five million dollars, we have to know exactly what we wanted to do next. And if Libby wins the lottery and isn't here, the new superintendent who comes in, we say, by the way, this is our plan, so this is what we were intending to do next, because it's, you're hoping it's based on what the community and the board have wanted to.
When we have four hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year in a fund balance, rather than, oh, well, maybe we could put it towards this parking lot. We haven't really considered other things, there's, there's a community vision for how to spend.
The ends are...
No, they're gonna answer this question.
No, they're gonna answer the end. You need a three-year plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even like the three-year plan might not answer this session, because the superintendent might want, say, like, I don't want to be necessarily shackled by what the previous superintendent wanted to do.
It might not, but it's a start.
So, in terms of these, the immediate, I mean, I realize it's a bigger conversation, but we're really trying to figure out, like, what's the next step on, on community engagement? And it sounds like you're gonna do a draft of a question or five.
So, we'll bring questions back to the next board meeting, so you all can think about it, and then I'll craft some with the admin team as well, for you to react to or wordsmith. And then I heard Tina and I go into the senior center to do some, some stuff for the seniors. I heard the Rotary, but I'm more than happy to go with you as well.
You like that? You enjoyed it?
My grandfather was a lifelong Rotarian.
That's great.
Smiles down at me every time I go, and I heard Jim talking about paracris.
Yeah. And then we use these questions sort of on media.
I wonder if Ryan wants to hold something at the Roxbury life, or maybe?
PTO's will be meeting regularly. There's a community potluck this coming Friday. Seniors have lunch every Monday, so there's, there's some avenues to...
I'm more than happy to join, Daniel.
Do you ever go back with the question to Roxbury, how'd the merger go? Do we ever do that to the community?
No, we didn't. Lisa and I had talked about, could have been at the end of the first year, like, kind of reaching out to some of the families, some of the, you know, more involved folks, and it just got busy.
But now, it might be more valuable, because to say, it's been a couple of years. How are we feeling? You know, I mean, that's the most provocative question maybe in Roxbury. I don't know. Is, I mean, it may not engage the whole community, but, I don't, I don't, you know, you don't want to look back too much, but there are some, we went through some big things as a district. How did we do? And administrative turnover is another one of those things that was huge, and engage the community.
So, you'd say that we could interpret the fact that, you know, how many angry people do we have here tonight complaining about things? Or how many people do we have jumping up and down, that everything is fantastic? You know, we seem to be doing all right.
All right, okay.
Also, I feel, I think sometimes it's like, I'm thinking of an online survey or just asking the question, it's a good opportunity to collect success stories, small individual success stories that you don't hear about. Like I would hear about one through a completely different channel, just in conversation with somebody before I joined the school board. Oh, you know, I, you know, this happened to my child in the school and it was, you know, it was a really positive thing for me. And I think it would be great to hear about some of those and be able to share those.
So then you might be able to get themes too that can influence, like protect this piece.
Right.
So, good discussion. Let's move on to the last item on our agenda, we're already past a German thought and we have to say hi to her. Her mom. I could talk about this piece a little bit. So the policy committee two weeks ago had expected to have before the board tonight a draft policy for gender non-compliant students. That's not the case. About a day and a half, two days before our second to last policy committee meeting, I found out that the V S B A essentially withdrew the model policy that they had for this topic. That policy was the foundation for the draft that we were going to bring before you tonight. So a little bit of a wrench in the plan there. Again, if you guys remember the background for where we had started, early summer, some of the principals come and said, you know, we have some good procedures in place, but there's a lot of fuzziness with all of these topics and we'd like to have a little more backing from the board. Essentially, we'd like to have something of policy to really affirm what we're doing. So we took the lead on it. I had some meetings with Mara Iverson from Outright Vermont. Libby had sent me some of the procedures that the superintendents get from A O E. Again, the V S B A model policy was the foundation and we had a pretty good path going forward. And then, surprise, yeah, when I spoke with V S B A about their decision, the federal judges across this country have been making rulings that are inconsistent. The primary legal reference for their policy was a Dear Colleagues, was the Dear Colleagues letter from the end of the Obama administration, which had been rescinded with our new administration. So that big foundation was kind of pulled out and there's just a lot of unknowns right now on this topic. So we don't have anything before you tonight, but I think we had a question for maybe what you guys would like us to do. We could, one, continue on with the draft we have, knowing that the legal references aren't maybe the best that they are, they're going to be changing, so that we have to pay attention to. Or we could just hold off and wait and see how things play out, not have anything on the books at all. Or probably the third option might be, we could come up with not necessarily a vision type policy, but just something very basic that this is the direction we would like our administration to go on this topic. Not prescribe anything, you know, very general, support our students, don't break the law, do the best you can.
I can abide by those three things.
Obviously more elegant than that, but so that is the only other update that I have on the topic. It sounds like in a best world scenario, Visbit attorneys are working on the recommendation for V S B A and they think maybe the end of November, they might have an updated policy for us to work on again, but again, that's totally over the air.
I have to do what Mara had to say because she helped V S B A write the first one.
She did. If I were to summarize our conversation, a lot of her critiques would be, this is the best we have right now.
The old one that they went through.
Yes. There wasn't anything glaringly wrong, or there wasn't any single thing that she used to take this out, you had to put this in. There wasn't any really significant concrete change. She and I spent time talking through, it helped me get informed on some of the topics and the challenges, but it was, she probably said that several times in our conversation, this is the best we have. We did, when we found out about the V S B A's withdrawal, I did reach out to Libby to ask the principals again, kind of for their feedback on this, just like we're asking you right now. What would you guys like? Would you like us to go ahead with what we've been doing? Are you happy with what you have procedures? We didn't hear anything back from.
Yeah, I didn't hear much back from them. I think my question would be, would this board's opinion change, I know my principal's opinion would not change based on where we are, but would this board's opinion change about how we work with, with this topic if federal law changed? Which I don't think you would personally.
Values haven't changed.
Values haven't changed. I mean, if the federal law imposes.
Something else.
Something else that we have to, that we have a responsibility to respond to.
That can be a caveat and the policy can be, you know, but we shall remain consistent with federal law or whatever, but.
Well, I think in some ways, to be honest with you, we want to be a counterpoint to what's going on.
So one of the things to say, to respond to what Andrew said, apparently one of the things that, that there's some working on, the Trump administration may promulgate a rule that defines gender as biological sex, which could then reverberate through all kinds of.
All kinds of stuff. Well, suppose you brought to us the policy that you'd written and we look at that and make a decision, I didn't see that. Does that make any sense?
I'm sorry.
Suppose you brought the policy that you had written to us to see as a board, do we think that's a good policy, no matter what the rest of the world's doing? And then again, decide, should we put this in place and we would change it if something happened that it was suddenly illegal?
Not all policies have law in it. Well, this one is very, I mean, I kind of understand why the V S B A felt like they had to pull it because they heavily cited it and it's heavily cited to authority that , you know, the legal authorities.
And you're right, Libby, it does not have to be so heavily cited. It does not.
Writer values. We took the funding.
Whatever it is. What do you, what do you guys suggest? I mean, you guys have been.
I don't think the V S B A draft and the draft that we had coming before you guys was very prescriptive necessarily, but it was, it was more detailed than some of our other policies. I think I would lean a little bit more towards the more values-based directive approach, which would be kind of pulling out the definitions, pulling out a lot of the legal references and going forward with that direction, that yes, we're going to support our students, do our best to reduce potential for conflict and.
You may have to have a little more, I mean, obviously it would have to have more meaning of that, but that's, that's where it kind of is what supports decision-making in the schools, it gives you enough when you're making a decision to look at the policy and go, well, in this case, this is the filter we use to make that decision. Without the legal, I mean, that is going to still bind us, but you know, you need, there needs to be more in there in terms of kind of.
Needs to be a little bit of teeth to tell us where, that our direction we're currently taking is the direction that this board supports.
And maybe there's where we need to find the questions that are, that need clarity because we could go forever on values about equity and, you know, and privacy and anything else we want to talk about, but it doesn't maybe guide you.
I mean, you know, if it said enough around respecting students' gender identity or respecting privacy and doing so to the greatest extent possible while complying with other legal requirements, I mean, is, is that level of detail close to enough? The V S B A policy had some more specifics about record keeping, for example, and has maintained the two sets of records, like does that have to be in the policy?
It's more procedural.
So I was wondering too, are we going to set up a guideline for administrative procedure to deal with? Because I think some of the problems the principals are having are very specific ones. You know, you have a situation where.
They have to do with records.
Records, where records go and who, you know, where things get mailed and under what name they get mailed.
That's where case law is causing problems because whatever position we take is challengeable and it, we don't know how to be settled out. So if you're looking for the board to take that responsibility, fair enough, to say, the board's willing to take the risk, do it this way, that's great. Then the administration says, you know, I don't know what the law says, but the board says to do it, so I got to do it. And I don't think we can do that right now is the problem.
Or the administration can tweak the procedure within, you know, the broader values of the policy and if there's, you know, law that comes down to fines or instructs.
In terms of that, we have a pretty, we have a tight policy review schedule that's about to start because some policies are going to be started, to be reviewed very soon, right? And there's nothing that stops the board from saying, we need to put this policy on the agenda next and review it because law has changed. Right. There's nothing that tells us we can't do that.
You certainly haven't pulled a lot of lawyers on this board. I would think, well, I would, I would think that it would be better to have something for the administration to refer to than nothing. It really leaves you out in no man's land if there's nothing there to refer to.
It allows the schools to make a statement rather than the district to make a statement of support, which is not, that's not a good place to be, to need the district making a statement. We're not.
So why don't we try to make a statement?
Yeah. Yeah, do it around values and, you know, we get crazy rule from the feds, we'll probably get that.
Do we cross-reference policies from time to time in our policies?
Try not to.
Okay, I'm just wondering with the general, because with the equity policy, I wonder if that. There's definitely some pieces that, if there is things when, in this gender policy, I was like, we set this much better in. And laws, laws cross-reference each other.
Yeah, but I think the.
I wasn't certain how.
Well, I think the idea of the policy.
Let's keep it clean.
Keep it clean and.
Simple.
They can stand alone.
Yeah, exactly. But is the policy going to specifically reference values related to record keeping?
I think what we might be able to, I think what we might be able to do is interpersonal conflict is a big one. Like that's where the records become such a hot topic is because we're trying to support our students. The students themselves in the building, it's easy, but it's when you start talking to the parents outside, to the public outside, like that's when it gets a little more hairy and there's a chance for conflict. It's maybe having a value statement for reduce, doing the best to minimize the conflict and doing the best, I haven't sat down and fleshed that out, but.
Well, we're bringing up, I mean, it was a procedure so that each school knew how they notified and who they notified, kind of thing.
That still.
And what name they use to notify.
That still needs to be built internally after you see a policy statement effectively.
So, Bridgette Ryan, Steve, do you feel they have enough guidance to figure out, go more values-based?
Yeah. Libby, can we see, we actually have to see the procedures that the principals have.
Procedures to the policies?
No, for this topic.
Oh, I don't think there's anything formalized to make them feel reactive to when the situation arises at the moment, yeah. But I can say there was a question thrown to me from, to ask if we had a policy around this from the U S this year already, going down the grades.
It might be good for us on the side to understand what that question was, just so we can put a point on the policy a little bit. We can do that.
I think you all talked to the principals about this.
Okay.
In a more private executive session kind of way, it might be important.
Okay. You want us to go directly to them, the conversation?
I think we can set it up, yeah. Just because I don't want to speak for them because I'm not in the direct, immediate decision, you know?
Especially since they're the ones who catalyze this, their requests. That's what we have to update today. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. What did you do, Karen?
You want to turn?
All in favor? Any opposed?